Evening. I'm going to go ahead and call tonight's meeting, regular board meeting, to order. If you'd please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge allegiance.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we apologize and appreciate all of you making the trip down here. We were surprised as well this afternoon when we got the call that our meeting was going to be moved here. The county commission building is experiencing some technical difficulties and we didn't have enough time to get a bigger venue set up for tonight's meeting. So we appreciate you guys making the trek. That's why we postponed the start of the meeting so that if anybody went to Taverries, they could see the sign on the door and make the trip down here for this comfortable room where we meet for our workshops. So we are glad you get to see this. I also do want to just let everybody know, there's nothing on our agenda tonight in which we're going to vote for the Sentinel Program or to arm teachers. There's a discussion on a result of surveys that we sent to our staff that everybody knew we were sending out. So we will be having that, but there is no vote tonight in regards to our students' safety measures. So we just wanted to let everybody know that, too. There was some hype and we got a lot of questions. I know I fielded some about what time is the vote tonight? There's no vote this evening. So we are, we are so, so happy to have a packed house. We appreciate everybody coming out tonight. And because of the amount of public input that we have up here, one change that we're going to make to our order of the agenda is to allow our student representative and our teacher of the year to speak, and our attorney, if he has anything, to speak prior to the public input. But that's the only move around that we'll make in regards to that. So, having said that, Superintendent.
So, welcome. We have two special guests that I'll just briefly introduce and then we will hear from them in just a second. I'd like to welcome back Ian Long. Ian is the student representative from Taverries High School. And just a little bit about him, he is a seven, eighteen-year-old, you're not seven, you're eighteen-year-old, Taverries High School senior. He is involved with the Student Government Association and serves as their president. He is also the president of the Future Farmers of America and is a livestock showman at the Lake County Fair. He is certified in agro-technology and ag mechanics. He is an active volunteer at the Taverries High School agricultural department's farm, Lake County Fair, and summer inner-city mission trips with LifePoint Church. And he is pursuing a degree in criminal justice at Seminole State College in the fall. So, welcome to Ian. We'll hear from him in just a second. Also with us tonight, very pleased to introduce Jason Lancy. He is Lake County's Teacher of the Year from Wendy Hill Middle School. So, welcome to Jason. A little bit about him, he is an eighth-grade algebra teacher at Wendy Hill Middle School and is the chair of the math department, STEM club coach, and the school's flag football coach since 2009. He wrote in his application that "Even though I never had positive connections with teachers growing up, I can make a difference with my students. Every day, they inspire me to be better at what I do. The relationships that I create with them mean more to me than anything else, even the content that I teach." So, welcome to you, and we look forward to hearing from you in just a minute as well.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes, additions, allegiance from the agenda, board members, Superintendent?
I have one. Like to pull item 8.02 for no action. We'll bring that one back at a later date.
I'd like to pull 8.04.
Okay. Is that all? Okay. Approval of the minutes, Superintendent.
Recommend approval of the minutes from the school board workshop dated March 5th, 2018.
Has it heard the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? And we are at our report. If we're going to jump down, oh, no, we are, we have a representation. I would like to invite Mrs. Cole to come up and do a proclamation.
Madam Chair, school board members, and Superintendent Cornegy. I would like to introduce Dr. Faith Harris, who is our Instruction Materials and Media Services Manager. She is going to read the proclamation, recognize any media specialists that are here tonight, and share a brief video for you.
Good evening. It is my honor to stand before you to officially proclaim April as School Library Month for Lake County schools and celebrate our spectacular media specialists and their programs. This year's theme is Making Connections at Your School Library. Throughout the month of April, media specialists will host activities to help their school and local communities celebrate the role that they play with school library programs in transforming learning. I would like to ask all media specialists to stand to be recognized with me tonight. At this time, I will read the official proclamation and share a quick video that will capture the great work of our media specialists. Lake County Schools School Library Month Proclamation, April 2018. Have to take a deep breath for this one. Whereas April 2018 is Designated the Thirty-third Annual National School Library Month, and whereas the school libraries provide materials for our teachers and students that will encourage growth and knowledge, whereas school libraries provide materials that will develop literary, cultural, aesthetic appreciation, and ethical standards, and whereas school libraries provide materials which will reflect the ideals and belief of religious, social, political, and historical ethnic groups, and their contributions to the American and world heritage and culture, and whereas school libraries provide books to encourage... Whereas school libraries provide materials to meet individual needs, varied interests, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and maturity levels of students served, and whereas school libraries are a fun place for students to go and all students deserve a well-managed library to provide for free expression and access to ideas. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Lake County Schools hereby do proclaim April 2018 as School Library Month in all the public... ...students of Lake County to recognize and support this action and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month. In testimony whereof, the School Board of Lake County, Florida, and Superintendent have hereunto subscribed their names and have caused the official seal of Lake County School Board to be hereunto affixed on this twenty-sixth day of March 2018. A copy of this proclamation is hereby provided in the archive records of this board. So at this time, I would like to share a short video... ...here in the county. Thank you. I would like to say for more information on what we're doing throughout the month of April, feel free to visit our Media Services webpage on the Internet and Internet. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the media specialists who are here and all around the county. We definitely appreciate you and all you do for our schools. Dr. Burns has asked to pull an item from the agenda.
Yes, can I pull 8.01?
8.01. Okay. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Ian Long again from Taverries High School.
I do. I also want to thank our media specialists for all that they do. My mother was a media specialist, so you know, you all have a very special place in my heart as I, I think of her when I think of you and the work that you do. I recommend approval of the proclamation declaring twenty, March this month, 2018, School Library Month.
All right. So moved.
Second.
I said this, this month because I wasn't sure what the month was. It is April, right? I figured that would work, right? Would you like me to start again?
Still moved.
Thank you, Marie. Whatever month this is, I declare it as School Library Month.
It's next month, we're good.
April, okay. How about I recommend approval of the proclamation that April 2018 declared School Library Month? Did I get it right that time?
So moved.
Oh, I got like three seconds. Okay, so moved by Mr. Mathias and a second by Mr. Gamble. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Great. Okay, now I'm going to introduce Mr. Long. So it's a pleasure to have you back.
Thank you.
Looking forward to hearing from you.
Well, I hope y'all can hear me. It sounds like y'all can hear me. Good evening, my name is Ian Long. I'm a senior at Taverries High School who served as a student representative for our March 12th school board meeting, and again have this awesome privilege to serve as student rep for tonight's meeting. I also head the THS Student Government Association as president and am the Taverries Future Farmers of America chapter president. It is an honor to be here tonight, and I am very appreciative of this opportunity to share with you all the recent achievements our Taverries students have worked so hard towards reaching and the upcoming events our students are working towards in their respective sports and clubs. Recently, our boys' weightlifting team led by Coach Fernandez won the title of regional champions. They currently have five boys who have automatically qualified for the state championship with three to five more who are working towards qualifying for state as well. Our drama club has been performing in Taverries High School play The Little Mermaid outstandingly with almost if not all sold-out shows. The drama club continues to grow and has done incredibly well at representing Taverries High School. Our Taverries bands led by Mr. Bushman have continued to dominate in their jazz competitions, competing against multiple schools and taking superiors in multiple events. The Lake County Fair is just around the corner, beginning in nine days, where myself and twenty-seven others of the Taverries FFA will be exhibiting livestock, including steers, heifers, pigs, chickens, meat goats, and rabbits. I encourage you all to come out and support our exhibitors' efforts, and for those interested in potentially buying our market show animals, please see me after the meeting to further discuss signing up as a buyer at the county fair. Rad bash for our seniors will be April 13th. For any questions or information regarding the senior trip, please contact the school. The Taverries High School prom sponsored by Mrs. Newman and planned by the junior class student government will be held on April 28th from 8:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. The fire and ice-themed prom will be located at Taverries Pavilion on the lake and will exhibit fantastic fire shows and ice sculptures, all being brought in right at budget. Our school has continued to prove to be an exceptional source of education and opportunities. Our teachers, staff, and club sponsors put their heart into these kids at Taverries High, and the students continuously represent their school phenomenally. I would like to thank everyone who contributes to this school system for your work and investments are greatly appreciated and benefit these children significantly. Two weeks ago, I was given the opportunity to give my comments on school security in Lake County and advocate for Mr. Bill Mathias' proposal to arm select school staff who are willing to take on this responsibility and go through the necessary training to defend the children in our school systems. To see my full argument and call for effective security measures in schools, you can find it on the Lake County School Board YouTube channel, clicking on the March 12th, 2018 school board meeting video. Today, I'm here to reiterate my call for a more properly defended school system to protect students as they learn and grow. As a student of the Lake County schools for almost my entire academic career, I believe it is imperative that the superintendent, school board members, and members of the community support this proposal, as it is a necessary precaution to defend your children and their teachers as these kids prepare to lead America in its future. This measure backed by our elected sheriff Peyton Grinnell will allow a better defense system to deter or prevent mass killers from taking aim on people of our community in what is supposed to be a safe environment. As the world changes and violence is seeming to be more prevalent, we the people must recognize that we live in a new reality where evil is striking in new forms. Evil is taking aim on our children and their educators where law enforcement takes too long to effectively respond. By the time it takes for multiple lives to be lost, us students and our educators are on our own. Anonymous, trained, and determined staff will be what stands in the way of potential mass murder and your sons and daughters, your husbands and wives, and fathers and mothers. These teachers, prior military or law enforcement personnel, would have the ability to engage deadly threats imposed on them and their students with equal force. Through a hundred and thirty-two-hour courses involving firearms training and handling, lessons in defensive tactics and active shooter scenarios, and education pertaining to lawful engagement, school staff would be equipped with what they need to thwart attempted massacres of children. Had the educators and coaches at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School who died defending their kids been armed and trained for these incidents, the severity would have been drastically minimized. We need to understand that evil is alive. School shootings will happen again. Some parents will face the unimaginable nightmare come true that their sons and daughters won't be coming home one day because they were gunned down by psychopathic killers with no regard for the value of life as those at Parkland did. It's time we do something. We have teachers and staff who take pride in us students and without a doubt would stand in front of your children if an armed murderer came through their classroom door. Let's give those teachers the training and a better chance to do so if the time comes at Lake County schools so they can stop the threat and stop the death. These school staff members will be the line of defense that your children can one day rely on. Arming specific school staff is the fastest measure we can instill in our school systems. There are teachers who are up for the task and responsibility to be self-reliant and be that barrier between murderers and your children. It's time the school system provides a path for school staff to become the safeguard for children that past victims' schools lacked. School shootings are going to happen again. People's lives are going to be unfairly cut short because deranged, hateful people's desires to kill, take them. School board members, we are relying on you to make the right decision and go forward with this proposal. Let's make our schools the exemption to the list of vulnerable targets for slaughter. Let's take actions so the future of America and this community can be part of it. Don't let Lake County schools be the next mass shooters' option. Make the Lake County school district safe, keep our teachers safe, keep your children safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I would like to welcome Mr. Lancy, who has voted our teacher of the year. We have celebrated with him and we are really excited to have you here tonight to give a report.
Thanks. All right, so that's, that's one to follow up. So I was asked here to just kind of give a little bit about me and a little bit about what's going on in our school. So, I've, I've worked in Wendy Hill Middle School for eleven years now. That's where I started my career. I originally grew up in Pittsburgh. I got my bachelor's degree at IUP. I got my, my master's at UCF. So I've been there for a while now. Wendy Hill's actually the only school I've ever taught at, so it's, it's definitely my home. Some other stuff kind of going on would be with my class, like I guess what makes me stick out a little bit more than others. One, I have what's called a flexible seating classroom where I've had over seven to eight thousand dollars in donations to my room that helps get rid of all my desks, and I have lots of couches and chairs and cool stuff for the kids to sit in, and it's really neat, and it's, it's been a project of mine for a few years now, and it's, it's really grown. The, the research behind how the kids learn with a different style of classroom is really, really beneficial to them. I do a lot of other neat stuff with real-world projects. I do cellphone projects, car buying projects. I do stuff with Google, really those 21st century skills, getting the kids to learn how to program and getting them to learn where the math is really involved to inspire different, you know, engineers and, and students like that. I've done other projects with like bungee jumping with little Barbie dolls and stuff, which has been fun for the kids. We did a project just recently where the kids drew like their favorite picture and then they, they wrote the equations for the math that matched it and then typed it into the system and actually like did their own like animations, which was pretty cool. Stuff about the school, you know, we got some neat stuff going on. You know, we got food truck wars coming up this week, which is pretty fun, where our culinary teacher does something pretty cool where she has the kids, you know, basically design their own food trucks and make their own food truck like menus, and then, you know, they, they actually cook the food and then, you know, they, the, the teachers get to vote on their favorite food trucks, which is pretty neat. We have High School Musical 2 coming up with our theater department, which is always a fun show for the kids. Let's see, we had a faculty basketball game before spring break. That was, that was definitely interesting. The kids enjoy that every time. So we do, we do faculty volleyball, faculty basketball, which is really fun. We do, we try to do a lot of parent outreach, too. You know, we brought our school down into the Four Corners region, which is where a lot of our kids come from, and we did a neat, you know, kind of parent outreach night where we brought a lot of people down there, and it actually was a really good night. You know, I got a really good turnout with a lot of parents and teachers and kids kind of having fun, which turned out pretty well. Let's see, other stuff, you know, it's testing season, so we're definitely getting ready for a lot of stuff. We have a lot of Saturday sessions coming up where parents are invited to come in and see us teach on Saturdays and, you know, see how we're getting the kids ready for the tests. We did a, a big tribute for the students at Stoneman Douglas. You know, we, we did not a walkout, but I guess a walk-in where we, we did, the choir sang, the band played, you know, we made cards that were really nice for the kids, and they put them on this huge banner to send down there and, and put on the fence at Stoneman Douglas, so that was a great, a great tribute there. Other stuff, you know, I have to always talk about my wife, so I got just a second. So my wife, I love her to death, and she, she won Teacher of the Year at Imagine Southlake Charter, which is a school right down the street from me, so it's pretty cool that we, we both won the award the, the same year and up for state honors, which is fantastic. And that's about it for me. So, I just share a bunch of stuff.
And I can tell you, his classroom is amazing. So we got the privilege of going to tap his classroom whenever he was selected as one of our top three finalists. His flexible seating really is a comfortable environment. The kids were, they were speaking about how nice it is to learn in his classroom. So, we're going to give Mr. Lancy a pass this evening. He has a flat tire and he needs to get to the auto center, and so he was expressing some concern about the length of the meeting this evening and getting there, so we appreciate having you. We thank you for making it way over here with a flat tire and we, we hope that...
I'll be at Walmart when it's due.
Yeah, so be safe in that, and the weather isn't great, so.
Thanks, guys.
Mr. Johnson.
I don't have anything. It was fairly quiet last week.
Okay, fantastic. All right. Okay, so we're going to move to public input. I'm going to have the same request from before that you have three minutes. When you hear the buzzer go off, if you could just finish your sentence, and we appreciate you guys being here again. So we will start with Nicole Cooley. You can come up here. I know this is a different environment, you'll come right up here.
Not different for me, this is my first time. I apologize, I'm going to read off of my phone, I hope that's okay. My name's Nicole Cooley. I grew up going to Lake County Schools, graduate of Southlake High School in 2001. I now have three children, seven, five, and two. Maxwell is a first grader at Grassie Lake. Savannah will be in kindergarten next year at Grassie Lake. Sorry. I'm here because I think that this is incredibly important. I don't want my child to be in a school where there are any more opportunities for there to be guns or gun violence or any sort of injuries. So, Army teachers ignores the research that shows the presence of a gun increases the risk posed to students. Our teachers, school safety experts, and law enforcement oppose Army teachers. The American Federation of Teachers and the National Educators Association, the nation's two largest organizations of education professionals, oppose allowing guns in schools, a position they reiterated after the Parkland shooting. I think it's important to note that Governor Scott, our state senators, and a majority of the parents and teachers I know are strongly opposed to this proposal. So, I'm here asking you today to vote against this. There are much better ways to take care of our schools. Our teachers, our school staff needs to be focused on what they are the experts at, and our law enforcement agencies should be focused on what they're experts at, and that is protecting us and our children and our future. Thank you.
Theo Bob. Oh, because they're in the back.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity. Have I started yet?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the, the time just to speak for a moment. You know, I keep reading in the thing where I said last time, I said, listen, guns in schools are oxymorons. I didn't get a chance to expound on that, but listen, we all want the same thing, that is to prevent another incident like the many we've already had. Army teachers, not the right answer. Here's what I mean by oxymoron. There are too many things that can go wrong in a classroom now. I don't know, some people may not have been in a classroom. I know that we all want the same thing, but i-if you spend time in a classroom, you quickly find out there's no way a teacher can do all of that. They're stretched to the max doing what they do now. Rather, I would, I would recommend that we find veterans who can pass a background check, receive the money, get the monies from the state we need, and let's arm them with the semi-automatic rifle. I was a captain in the Army, I trained soldiers. I've been a teacher in the classroom, I've been an administrator, and I currently work in a, a high school. I'd like to have an AR-15, or AR, what's it called? AR-2. I'd love to have an AR, but you know what? You know why I can't have one? Well, my wife won't let me, for one. But I don't need one anymore. When I was in the Army, we used it and we knew it, and it was absolutely part of our bodies. We know how to use it. Now, I don't need one now, but I still say if we take, if we take our veterans, make sure they got a good background check, train them, allow them, train them on specifics, train the school on specifics, on how to deal with an active shooter. Those individuals will need to be uniform, i.e., again, another problem with teachers with guns is when the law enforcement show up on, on campus with an active shooter situation, how they gonna know who's the bad guy and the good guy? They never know. But if, if the person is uniform, armed, everyone knows, including the bad guy, if I go there, I've got a problem. So I think we need to continue to hold our legislators' feet to the fire and say, these are the things we want and we need in our schools. They'll fund it. There's some money out there, they will fund it, but teachers with guns, please don't do that to them. Just please, don't do it. But rather get people who are experts with weapons and let them do the job. One last thing I'll say, how do I, why do I think that'll work? Well, one, one year, my, my family and I went to Guatemala for a missions trip, and if you, you can go to a convenience store, a restaurant, anywhere you go, they're locked and loaded with, with automatic weapons. They're sending the message that if you have intentions to come and cause a problem, we gonna stop you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. weapons. They're sending the message that if you have intentions to come and cause a problem, we gonna stop you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Roxy Heist?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a former employee of Lake County Schools. I worked for Lake County Schools for 19 years. I am also the parent of a high school sophomore. Her whole life has been here in Lake County Schools and I'm here to say that the majority of the people that I know that I've worked with in my experience in Lake County Schools, they do not want teachers armed in those classrooms. They really don't even want more presence of guns on the campus. And as someone who did a lot of research in trauma-informed care and mental health first aid, the presence of those weapons and guns on the campus will inhibit learning in our students because they don't feel safe. A lot of them come from environments where they have received trauma due to gun violence and having that in a classroom around them will prohibit them from being able to learn and to be able to access the higher centers of their brains. I would instead propose that we turn that money that we're going to get to have all of these guns and do all that training into giving it to our... ...our so... The history and statistics show that law enforcement officers only have a 20% hit ratio when they are in armed confrontations. Those are trained professionals with years of experience and years of training. We do not need other people in classrooms that do not have that extensive amount of training. Also, there's another statistic that only, that 21% of officers who are killed by a handgun are actually killed by their own weapons. So we definitely don't need to create a situation where a weapon could be taken from one of these armed teachers. There was also armed officers at Columbine who actually engaged in gunfire against those shooters and were not able to stop them from entering the school building. This is not the way that we need to go. And as demonstrated by the deaths of Philando Castile, Tamir Rice, Stephen Clark, Samuel Dubois and others, even highly trained officers sometimes make devastating mistakes when deciding whether or not to use deadly force. And we do not need to put that on teachers. As a teacher, my job is to be there to work with children, to train children, to give them skills, to make them functioning members of a society and not to endanger their lives.
Thank you very much. Amber Smith?
I'm a junior at Mount Dora High School and I just have a couple of things to bring up, time and money. First of all, a lot of our teachers already are being sent out during school days for workshops, not allowing them to be in class to teach for us. Not only does that put a burden on us, students coming into testing season, it puts a burden on the teachers because then when they come back, they have to double up on what they were doing before and in order to get this training, what I'm understanding is that they would have to be taking out even more from our school situations, from our learning classes, lessons, what have you. Second is the money. One of my teachers, love her to death, she's my English teacher, she's great. The school is not providing her with paper, pencils, tissues, whatever, what have you, for her students. So she's waiting for her tax return to pay for those things. My question is, why does she have to do that? Why can't we provide that? Why are we going towards something unnecessary versus these things that we need already? Thank you.
Lucinda McGinn?
Hi, my name is Lucinda McGinn and I'm a resident of Eustis, Florida for the last five years. I am not invested in anyone in the school system right now, but I am invested in how this country is going and I'm very concerned about the move toward more security, more guns in places rather than addressing the question that really should be addressed and that is that these weapons are not needed by anyone other than the military and we should ban them. I'm not saying take away everybody's guns, I'm saying this particular type of gun is meant to kill. And so putting someone in the school with more guns, not necessarily, I think someone did mention that an AR-15 might be one of the guns of choice, I certainly hope not, but putting guns in the hands of more people only increases the risk of more injuries and deaths as far as I can see. I don't have any statistics to quote, we're getting plenty of that from other people, but I just plead, plead, plead with you not to support this and instead put your advocacy efforts behind state and federal gun control. Thank you.
Marion Harper?
Hello, my name is Marion Harper and I'm a senior at Eustis High School. A couple of days after the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas shooting, we had an unannounced and unplanned fire alarm. You could feel the entire student body tense up and hold their breath as teachers practically checked their email for some kind of announcement before letting their kids leave the classrooms. Our JROTC sergeant took precautions, locked the door and told his students to stay quiet. Finally, it was announced that maintenance was working on the system. It was an adrenaline-filled situation, now imagine if there were guns. Since 2015, there are 76 cases of friends, family members and emergency response employees being shot accidentally because they were thought to be intruders. That number would only rise if teachers were armed. Teachers are the lifeblood of our nation, they determine our future. We need to listen to them and support them because they know what's best for their students. You hired them, why don't you trust them? I age out of public school this year, but just because my friends and I are going away to college next year, don't think we won't vote. Even though I'll be across the ocean, don't think that I won't get my hands on an absentee ballot. I will not let our voices die down and let our elected officials become complacent because they can't hear the public opinion of their constituents. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amala Epinobi and I'm a 17-year-old senior at Eustis High School and unfortunately, I'm back in this building to talk about something that we should not even be discussing. Just this Saturday, I attended and was a key speaker at the March for Our Lives in Orlando where nearly 25,000 parents, teachers and students came to speak out. This included student survivors from Marjorie Stoneman Douglas who I stood alongside. Had any of you attended it, it would be abundantly clear that students and teachers don't want guns in their classrooms or on campuses in general. And out of the 83% of Lake County instructors who responded to your survey, 62% said that arming instructors would make no difference or make schools less safe. In doing the math that I learned in my gun-free classroom, I found that if 100% of instructors had responded, this percentage becomes 72.54%. And when you look at student surveys, you'll find that this percentage falls between 66 and 70%. Ignore these numbers now and they will no doubt make an appearance in opposition to your candidacy during this coming election. I have three reminders for all of you. One, that this world is about to witness how powerful and politically cognizant we kids are. Two, later this year, Stephanie Luke of District 5, Mark Dodd of District 3 and most importantly, Bill Mathias of District 1, your seats are up for election. And number three, come later this year, I turn 18 and so do many of the students that I work alongside who are passionate about their futures and their lives. We become constituents, we will organize and we will vote you out if you do not properly represent us. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abigail Fussell and I'm a sophomore at Taveris High School. On February 14th of this year, some classes were given a survey, like the end of the year survey, asking if we feel safe and supported in our school. The school system makes it seem like they care about how we feel, yet when we answer no on these surveys, it feels like we're ignored. When we say we will not feel safe with teachers carrying guns on campus, we're told we know nothing, that we're inconsiderate or that we're paid actors. When we were given this survey, when we were given this survey on Valentine's Day, a lot of us marched that we felt safe without thinking much about it. Little did we know that later that day, we found out about a mass shooting that happened at a school only a few hours away. All of us would probably likely change our answers. I know I would have marched that I didn't feel safe. Trying to learn complex math like the quadratic equation, knowing that a gun is only a few feet away from me is not a safe environment. Two students have, two incidents have happened with campus officers' guns accidentally going off since the Parkland shooting. Who's to say that while we're reading a Shakespeare novel or poem or whatever, that we are reading that day that a teacher's gun won't go off? That would scare anyone, let alone people in school who are just trying to get an education. Many students have things like anxiety and PTSD. Some come from abusive homes and unsafe communities and seeing a gun could be a trigger for them. Having guns on campus, especially armed teachers, would make students even more afraid and grades would suffer because of the focus, it would be on the teacher's gun and not the lesson. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Constance Albright?
Hi, I'm Constance Albright. I was a media specialist for 40 years. I know the miracles y'all work every day. It was an honor for me to work for 40 years in the public school system and I'm really concerned with what I see is happening now. Since I'm older, I used to try to teach the teachers to use a 16mm projector, you know? Okay, that gave me pause right there, but I really think the legislature is passing the buck on this. They're putting it on the monkey on your back. The monkey needs to be in Washington with some good gun laws, with some good mental health. I mean, we're just throwing pennies, just throwing little pennies at this stuff. Like this kid, I don't even want to say his name, that committed murder. You know, he just threw his gun down and walked out with the rest of the students. He just walked, that's how he got out. They found him two miles away. My sister said something to me, yeah, I said, "You know, when I worked at Evans High School, I could think of three or four that were probably worse than him," you know? But I mean, I feel like a gun in the classroom is an accident ready to happen, that we would do better, be better served if we could get some resources from Washington and Tallahassee to make our schools safer. It's not, we can't do it by ourselves. Our parents are great, the churches are great, the faith-based groups are great, but my gosh, there's just, we need some good gun laws, some good gun restrictions. Nobody needs an assault rifle. Thank you.
Kevin Foster?
Frank Herbert wrote in his novel, Doom, that fear is the mind killer. What he meant was that fear makes us do irrational things. He said that we must face our fear first and allow it to subside. Only then can we, can you make a decision as you instead of as the scared caveman version of you. Mr. Mathias, you have said that you received many messages from concerned, some might say fearful, parents who want to know what you're going to do to protect their kids. You've also said that this Sentinel plan was patched in response to those messages. That to me is proof enough that you are acting out of fear. A solution born from fear is not what I personally want to see. Your solution is certain to increase the everyday risk for our students while attempting to stave off some uncertain disaster. This to me is unacceptable. I very much appreciate Sheriff Grinnell's effort to put together a comprehensive plan to train and screen volunteers. I just don't think we should be cross-training our staff, admin and teachers into security officers. I would much prefer to see full-time deputies acting as security. It's something they've ostensibly been training for all their lives, protect and serve, right? Station them in or near the school and that's something that I personally could live with. "But that's so expensive," might be the reply. It is. Our kids are worth it, don't you think? So no, let's not take the cheap way out by cross-training the janitor nor the principal. Here's a different idea, hatched by my lovely wife. Allow existing sheriff's deputies to volunteer as school security in return for additional vacation days. This is just an example and the sheriff would probably have to adjust the ratio based on his budget, but two volunteer days gets a deputy one vacation day or something like that. And in keeping with my repeated calls elsewhere for this job to be done only by the most highly trained, all deputies volunteering should first go through the same additional training as outlined by Sheriff Grinnell for the Sentinel program. Maybe certain types of officers like SWAT should get a better deal on the ratio so that we can encourage the best of the best, the elite, to take up the mantle of this important job. If you think that this eminently sane and sensible idea is still too expensive and you still insist on taking the cheap way out by arming staff, admin and yes, some teachers, I've read the bill, so I know it's technically possible. Each of you needs to participate in a realistic, live, active shooter simulation. Go through this Sentinel training yourself and then see how you fare against a simulated shooter. Let's see if you're able to draw your weapon against an unexpected assailant. Let's see if you're able to return fire accurately before you get shot. Let's see if you're able to shoot the shooter without shooting an innocent. Don't you owe it to our kids to experience this situation firsthand before you make such an important policy decision? Oh yeah, make sure you get it all on video because the citizens of Lake County are going to expect you to show us your work, just like the teachers expect of our students.
Amy Marcinus?
Hello, my name is Amy Marcinus. I am proud to say that I have taught in Lake County Schools for 18 years, attended Leesburg Schools from 5th grade through graduation and have three daughters who flourished in the Lake County school system. On Saturday, hundreds of thousands of students and adults walked in over 800 marches around the world to advocate for ending gun violence and the epidemic of mass shootings in our schools. Local marches took place in Taveris, Mount Dora and the villages. I was unable to participate because I was attending a meeting of women educators in South Florida, but was proud of my daughter and mother who marched in Orlando and my daughter and her boyfriend who marched in Tallahassee. I'd like to share my thoughts with you tonight. The students who marched are watching, listening, taking action and most importantly, voting. They have lived with gun violence their whole lives. I hope and pray that we can truly proclaim "never again," but I fear that without massive reform, that won't be the case. So for now, I will say enough. We as adults are failing all of our children by allowing this vicious cycle of gun violence to continue. There is much work to do, but my focus for tonight is on the issue of arming teachers. Honestly, when I think about the idea of teachers with guns, it makes me sick inside. Every fiber of my being shouts "no." There are so many other ways to increase school safety, school resource officers, more secure buildings, prevention education and counselors. The solution is not to bring more guns on campus which increases the likelihood of additional harm as evidenced in recent reports from Georgia and California. School is meant to be a safe haven where students can learn without fear. Students encounter gun violence in their homes, neighborhoods and streets. Placing guns in the hands of administrators, teachers or staff is not the answer. When I think about arming teachers and administrators, I immediately experience an acute stress response also known as the fight or flight response. My heart rate quickens, I breathe faster and my body tenses. My initial reaction to this issue is flight, I'm done. But the problem with that is I love my school, I love being a teacher, I love our students and families. There may come a day when I have to make that choice, but today is not that day. Today I choose to be brave and courageous and to fight for what I believe is right. We must do everything in our power... We must do everything in our power to keep students safe, to choose kids, not guns, and to not arm teachers and administrators. Let us do what we're meant to do: teach. I hope you'll join me. Thank you.
We have some additional input cards, but they are going to be postponed until after we do some voting on some additional items. So, at this point in time, we are on our consent agenda. Superintendent.
I recommend approval of the consent agenda, items eight point oh three, eight point oh five, to item ten point oh seven.
Have you heard the recommendation?
Summude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Okay, that takes us to eight point oh one. I believe Dr. Burns, you pulled eight point oh one. Are you going to start us off?
Yeah, it, um, this really just occurred to me. That we're not having this discussion, like that we should be discussing whether or not this impact fee program clearly, in my opinion, has failed. There was ten waivers, yet we're still giving a hundred percent of that money to the, to the county commission of the impact fee money per school. Per building, per residence, not certificate of occupancy.
We're not giving them the entire $250,000. We're giving them what was...
Right, for those ten schools. So, in my opinion, the idea was for this to be an infill lot program, and in a year, they've managed to have ten spots, and we're just giving the county commission $100,000 for that. We got fifty cents per kid this year, and we're giving $100,000 to our county commission so that they can, I don't know what, but we got fifty cents per kid. Forty-seven. That hurts. So, I don't know, I just think we should discuss it.
You want me to discuss? The impact fee waiver program was an effort to keep the county commission that largely wants to cut impact fees by fifty percent. That'd be a $7 million cut to the district. And at the time it was first negotiated, it was to allow smaller builders to use the opportunity to get an impact fee waiver of some amount. And the $250,000 is just a set aside, that's the maximum that could be used. The county commission has come forward, and again, will agree to fully funding if we go along with this setting aside of $250,000. So, it's a $7 million discussion that I think, putting, since it wasn't used initially, I think it benefits small builders, I think it benefits folks that have infill lots in communities where they can't get the comps. If you add the $9,300, this is a good program for the district, and I support it.
So, okay, so, I wasn't clear, they've come back to us and held a gun to our head again this year? Like, they're basically saying...
The original and our local agreement expired on April eighteenth, two thousand seven, two thousand and eighteen, and what this was, was a request to extend it for another year. Everything in this agreement, except the line on paragraph seven that changes the date, is the same as it was.
So, I, like, I got it. I got last year that we did this because it was do this, or you get screwed. And so, my question is, we're in an even worse position with funding this year. Are they still in their same position? Have they come to us, or are we just automatically renewing this? Have they said to us, do this, or we're gonna cut you by $7 million?
No.
So, shouldn't we at least ask?
We certainly can. If you would like, I can invite Ms. Campion to come back in, and we can have this discussion at a later date during a workshop, and then bring this back.
I think that would be reasonable.
Your date, you said your date is April eighteenth?
April eight, April eighteenth, yes, ma'am.
I mean, this may be the best deal we can cut, but I'd like to at least know it was the best deal we could cut.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But it's not necessarily a deal.
I felt like it was a deal last year. I did.
It was a compromise to a newly-elected county commission that had made in the campaign issues that they were going to cut impact fees. Those same people are still holding office, and so this guaranteed us the bulk of our funding for the district.
So, you're afraid we'll lose it?
I am afraid, yes.
So, I think I was the guy last year that was, I mean, probably the most outspoken opponent of this. That being said, I felt like we were bullied, we had no other choice, and the alternative was we were gonna lose $7 million, and then that school and four corners goes away, and that we're gonna continue to flood Windy Hill and Sawgrass Bay with more students than they can even possibly fathom on those campuses. You know, so I hate that our students were the ones that were held hostage, and we've had the ransom. So, it's funny, as you look at this, and originally I saw only $93,000 was used, what a failure. I was like, well, that's actually a good thing, that the program flopped, and they're asking us to keep going with it.
That's right, that's right.
So, that's our, that's the cheapest out. You know, I mean, I think if we invite them back in here and say, do you want to keep us at a hundred percent impact fees, or do you want to cut them, they're gonna say, we want to cut them. So, once again, I'm still not in love with it, but, you know, it's a shame that they're even allowed to bully us the way they are, but it is what it is.
I don't want to use...
When you're not the levying authority on this.
I think maybe using the word bully is intense, that they have philosophical differences, that they are... No, seriously.
But a philosophical difference of, if you don't do this, then we will, dot, dot, dot.
That was not presented in this document. Now, last time, it was a little more clear, but I think that this is a fair program also to our smaller builders, that I believe that allow, and to folks that have infill lots. So, it's a win for them, it's a win for the small builder, and it doesn't force the county commissioners to make a decision. It locks us in at fully funding for the next year. This is, this is something that I will vote for.
And probably within the next year, you'll be revisiting this issue anyway, because the, it's about time to review and renew the report for the expert for what the correct amount of the impact fee should be.
Well, another thing, too, to add, is Tallahassee just changed us as far as what we will be able to receive from impact fees, from certain houses that would be built that meet a different criteria, and they would not fall under the impact fee, they would be exempt. So, we're gonna lose some funding there as well, because of, certain builders can build this type of house, and it'd be considered, you know, exempt, so we're gonna lose that automatically. I would be more apt to approve this than lose $7 million that we could lose. But there, again, we may not be losing seven million, we may only be losing four or five, but still, four or five million compared to $250,000 is a big jump.
I think another interesting component would be to look at the, with the small builders and the amount that they charged the homeowner that was purchasing, if they have been purchased, because at this point, it's just even to build, they may not have been sold yet, but were those impact fee dollars...
Significant?
Right.
Like, was it a $40,000 house, or was it a $400,000 house?
That would be something to look at.
No, no, there was a cap on the...
But there was a, yeah, there was a cap, and it had to fit the style. I'm more inclined to see if those soft costs weren't made up elsewhere, like what was the bottom line for the builder?
Did they still recoup their profit?
Right, right. That would, that would be interesting to me. Because there is a compelling argument that we have some small builders that can't afford to build homes because our impact fee is very high compared to surrounding counties, but are they actually loving that cost is interesting to me.
Not only that, but to that person that owns property that is in a neighborhood that isn't going to get the comps, that then you add $9,300 to that, does that lot then become of no value, or someone can't afford to buy it and build? So, this also affects those people that are landowners and taxpayers.
So, I'm hearing maybe we should hear the superintendent's recommendation and make a motion or not, and go from there, without what to do next. Superintendent?
I recommend approval of item eight point oh one, school impact fee waiver program extension.
Summude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Question before we vote, I want to have a question.
You kind of give me eye contact, other than that. You were not even looking at me.
Just a question. So, this impact, this agreement will last another year. You mentioned a timeline, Mr. Johnson, of when we would go back for another study. Would that other study result then be in place, or be decided by the end of this? Like, I don't want to lock the whole county into $9,324 if the new amount will be $10,000.
It probably won't be completed by this time next year. And just so there's no confusion, it's a year extension, and that's how it's usually looked at, but like most of our contracts, this has a out provision, and the out provision in this contract is sixty days. So, either party can decide, well, we don't want to go forward with it anymore and stop it at sixty days notice.
Thanks. Is that better? Are there any more questions?
I just, I, I don't know, I just think we should ask, like, we just haven't talked with, we haven't had that conversation.
You could talk to them after you got this contract in place and ask to revise the number. That way, you'll have some assurance that at least you've got this guarantee. Now, they may come back to that and say, well, we're gonna do what we've signed to do for the next, until next April.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. I'm giving you a pause. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, so we are on eight point oh four. Mr. Campbell.
The reason I pulled this is, and I made a comment whenever I met with staff and superintendent, is this is a piggyback, and in the piggyback, it doesn't detail the merchandise that we would be pulling for, to purchase. It just gives, you know, let's see, like, item one A or one B. And one of the comments I made is, before this would go out to be purchased, I'd like to see what it is that we're actually purchasing versus that all we have is an item one A, and that this is not a blanket, that we are acknowledging that we're allowing them not to exceed a million dollars to go out and spend up to this and not have to bring it back before the board. My understanding, anything over $20,000 would need to come back for approval from the board. So, I, that's why I pulled this, is to make sure that this is out there and known, that we're not just approving just a blanket then to go, because as I've made a comment, I don't want to see a freezer-cooler being put up for storage, and we didn't know about it. So, that's, that's my comment.
Superintendent?
Recommend approval of eight point oh four, the piggyback immunity county school bid.
Okay, you guys have heard the recommendation? Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll that one for no action, so I think we were, we are on our results of our safety survey. Pass that over to you.
Great, and Challenger's gonna put it up on the screen so that everyone can follow along. It is on board docs, if you decide that you would like a printed copy. And just for all personnel, you will be sent a copy of the survey first thing in the morning so that you can all have access to that. This was a survey that resulted from our original discussion, where the board said that they did not want to proceed with making any decisions until they felt like they had enough input, and that they had heard from all of our stakeholders. So, one of the first stakeholder groups we worked, we sent this out to was all school-based employees. It represents about 4,789 school-based employees, and we had about 2,500 responses, so that's about fifty-three percent of our employees that participated in the survey. I did send, give them a week for the survey, including a weekend, and sent out some reminders. This was not just teachers, this was all school-based employees. So, I'll just share the results of that survey with you. First of all, the first question was, it is expected that the state law will require all school personnel to receive active shooter response training, so this was a question about how they would like to go about receiving that training. And you can see there that, this is a ranking system, it was a weighted system, so the score on the reports that you saw originally was on a weighted system, where if they selected as the first item, it received three points, if they selected as their second choice, it received two points, and if they selected it as their third choice, it received one point. So, you had a weighted system. They, we actually redid this today, just so the audience, it's a little bit easier to see when you're looking at the bar graphs than looking at the score. So, what this actually shows is, the green represents the first choice, whereas you can see that it was very close in regards to faculty presentations by local law enforcement at each school prior to the end of this school year, with a training in August for all new employees in one of our regular trainings that we have, versus the faculty presentation during pre-planning. And so, you can see, there was very little difference there, a little bit higher on faculty presentation by local law enforcement during the pre-planning. This was the Alice after, active shooter training that we discussed. We do have a local version of that, that I have met with the sheriff about, and we have some local trainers who could provide that training at each, for each faculty, and the sheriff and I are working on what that training plan would look out, look like, but it looks as though they would like that presentation during pre-planning, or because there's very, very little difference, we could maybe offer both as an alternative for those that would like it during the, before the end of this school year. So, we'll be working on that training plan, but this just let us know clearly that they did not want some online module that they would complete on their own, so we'll throw that idea out for sure. Then, looking at question number two, we asked some of the things that we had heard in regards of the funding that we'll receive. We did receive some funding already from the state. A lot of the other dollars that are available for school hardening measures, the monies for the school guardian program, all of that is held at the DOE. Those did not flow to the district, and all of those have to come through an application process. So, of any funds that we do have, or we did receive specifically to the school resource officers that we have, we wanted to ask about how will we best utilize those dollars, and you can see, again, number one being represented by the green. You can see there, this one is a little bit easier to read, and you all have a copy of that, but overwhelmingly, again, the funds were most in favor of being used for school resource officers in every school as the number-one priority. And then you can see that, that, secondly, school hardening measures that included fencing, gating, electronic door locks, cameras, exterior lighting, some of the hardening measures that we could apply for dollars for, would be the second choice. And that one, followed by metal detectors, reinforced windows, and interesting enough, the active shooter training fell to the end. So, that was a little interesting, but the state law does require that all employees receive active shooter training, so we will be complying with that law. But what this clearly showed to me is that it is the priority that we really work to ensure that we have a school resource officer in every school. And any available dollars that we have to move towards that beyond what we would need, because as we know, we don't have quite enough to make that happen, so we'll have to prioritize differently and work to make that happen. Question number three, do you support instructional personnel as defined in legislation? So, remember, that was defined as ROTC instructors, former military, former, former or current military, and former law enforcement who volunteer, remember, all of this is absolutely volunteer, to participate in the school guardian program. Would you support that initiative? You can see that fifty-two point seventy-five, about fifty-three percent, said yes, and forty-seven percent said no. As compared to the next question, which asked the same question, but was specific to support school personnel. So, this would be administrators and any other folks who don't have full-time classroom responsibilities, and we saw kind of the reverse of that, with sixty-two percent saying that they would not support that, and thirty-seven percent saying that they would support that. Then, the third question was a follow-up to question, or fifth question, I'm sorry, was a follow-up to question number three, which asked the same question, but they said, but it asked, would you support the program for instructional personnel? And we define that again, these are ROTC instructors, former and current law enforcement, former and current military, and former law enforcement, if the gun was held in a biometric safe? And you can see there that fifty-seven percent, they were more in favor of that than how it was posed in question number three, which was that they were carrying the, the gun would be in their possession or some other accessible location other than a biometric safe. On question number six, do you feel safe on your school campus? Seventy-two percent said yes, twenty-seven point seven percent said no. And you see varying numbers there in terms of responses, is because simply some people didn't answer the question. Either they just weren't sure, didn't take an opinion, so that's why you see some have higher responses than others. And then, would having staff trained as a school guardian make you feel more or less safe? And you can see that thirty-seven, thirty-four percent said more safe, forty percent said no difference at all, and twenty-one percent said that they would feel less... no difference at all, and twenty-one percent said that they would feel less safe. So, again, this was just the first piece of data and the things that you wanted to, to look at in gathering feedback. I know that it is the intent of the board to continue to gather input and to seek other ways to, to solicit that from all of our stakeholders.
Do you have one more question? Cause I can hear you.
No, I think you missed that one. Did I get them all?
Would you volunteer for the program?
Oh. I'm missing the last question. The final question was, if they qualified for the program, would they volunteer? I thought it was important to know, that if you're eligible, would you, would you want to do it? And twenty-one percent said yes, and forty-two percent said that they were not eligible, and thirty-six percent said no. So, if we look at the numbers on here, that was for the yeses, that was five hundred and forty people who are, said that they were eligible. We certainly have to verify that. I thought that was a lot, five hundred and forty, who were either ROTC instructors, former or current military, and former law enforcement, said five hundred and forty said yes, and nine hundred and eight said no. So, again, that would be one thousand four hundred and forty-eight people who would be eligible. That seems really high to me, so certainly a question that we would need to vet.
Did they take this survey more than once?
No, in, in fact, because we did it through Survey Monkey, we use this system because it ensures that they can only take the survey one time. That was one of the criteria.
Other questions? This is not, there's no voting on this, this was just to discuss the results. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Do we have a timeline on anything?
Well, and I think the superintendent and I both have some things to share in regards to this, so, I'll let, we, we talked about having a student committee that we convened, so I know you've got an update on that if you want.
So, we have scheduled the first student advisory committee meeting in, in April, and I'm working with all of our high school principals and guidance counselors to identify the students that would represent each of the high schools on that committee, and we do have a date that they're going to be disseminating to those students. And so, I'm looking forward to meeting with those students and, and capturing that student voice. I think that's very important, and I, I think that once that, the committee has met, we'll bring the students before you to, to hear what the students have to say, as they go back to, as their school representatives, and get the collective voice of their school body, their student body as well. So, that is certainly our, one of our next steps, as we move forward to collect public input. And then we'll, I'm also going to be working alongside the sheriff to, to look at what is the training plan, is, is one of our next steps, and also putting a draft proposal together, should we choose that we do want to participate in the guardian program, what would that program look like? Who would be trained? How would they be trained? The, the timeline that you asked about, right now, remember, the bill was only adopted two weeks ago. So, the state has some work that they need to do before we could even consider making a decision at this point. There's some rule development that has to be done, and that hasn't happened yet. There's also, this, we're gonna have to apply to receive the dollars, and so we can't complete an application because there is no application yet. So, they're gonna take the next several months to establish some parameters for the program. They'll also be doing the rule development process, they'll be completing an application process, that'll go out to the districts. And we got a letter today from the governor, said that he would like to know the decision by July the first, and so that, that was when we would have to have made a decision.
And the superintendent and I discussed, we have a workshop that's coming up next Monday, we have it on the calendar already. We were able to speak with the sheriff's personnel that does the, the training, similar to the Alice program, that they have a local version here in Lake County, and he invited each of us to come, so next Monday, we will participate in an active shooter response training. It will be from nine to one at the, I'm not gonna remember the name of this building, it's Public Safety, the Public Safety Building, it's right next to Taverius Middle School. It's on the Lane Cut Off Road. Yeah, it was the Brad Center before, we've been there before. Dr. Burns, are you familiar with it?
No.
I can have Natalie send out the address, I'll get it to Natalie. Yeah, okay. Right next to the middle school. So, we'll do that from nine to one, so it's a four-hour training that we attend. He also asked if I would invite the county commissioners, I have reached out to their chairman, and am waiting to hear their response. I'm sure he's gotta do some polling and reaching out, and I would invite you to bring members of your staff as you deem appropriate as well. So, I don't know if it's video recorded, but we'll be participating.
Yeah.
Yes, so it'll be April 2nd, from nine to one, in lieu of a workshop. So, we will not be having a workshop.
Now, the Alice training, it still has not, it's never been clarified previously. The teachers would undergo Alice training, and then do teachers come with a classroom plan for the, to teach the kids? How, how is it, how is it taught? How is, how is, how does it translate?
Okay, so I think part of our question is, we are not sure, that's part of the reason we're gonna go through it as well. But I, I know people that have done it, and Lake Sumter State College does this for their instructors, and it's more of a methodology of when, when should you take cover, and when should you fight, and when should you, you know, what, how do you do different things depending on what's happening? So, I think once we go through this training and staff goes through this training, then we can come back and talk about what our current procedures are. We've talked about some, some of those inadequacies and ways we can better that, and that's gonna translate into what our teachers will do.
Right, cause I know that we also talked about age appropriateness.
Yes.
And is that something, like, does, does the sheriff do?
I mean, do active response training with our children?
No, the, again, I haven't seen the modules, because we haven't participated in the training, but the, the school-based modules that they'll roll out to the faculty will be age-specific, and with the modi, appropriate modification, structurally how they would implement it in the classroom. So, what will we be seeing?
Well, you won't be seeing, you'll be in it.
We'll be participating.
Which, which age group?
Okay, I don't think it's, okay, I don't think you're understanding.
Yeah, I'm really not.
Right, this is for what, what the teachers do in that situation, so I don't think that's age-specific whatsoever in regards to, when should I do this? And, and again, I don't know for sure in regards to, I've, I've never been to the training either, but it's how we can respond to an active shooter situation. So, they're gonna put some different scenarios in place for us?
Right, but how grownups and college kids act are totally different than how you would, how you would, as a teacher, handle a classroom of five-year-olds.
Yeah, this is an adult training.
This is an adult training.
Okay. It is not what the, will be rolled out in the classrooms.
Right. Okay.
Right.
Kids won't be participating in this.
So, then we'll be, at another time, see what will be rolled out in the classrooms?
And that's, that's what the sheriff and I spoke about in the specific modules that they have, that we'll be getting and sharing those.
Yeah. Okay.
I do think it's important to know that the Alice program, in looking at it, is a major paradigm shift from what we've done to date when it comes to active shooters. And so, I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to participate.
Other discussion about the safety, the surveys results or training?
Well, I just have one other piece of information I thought perhaps you might be able to clarify and put out there in the public. Based on the number of email messages that we receive, just making sure the public has the right information before they send us some, some message. And I know how many we've received about, there would be a vote tonight, and, and I think we've probably tried to clear the air now about the timeline for that, that we can't even take a vote even if we wanted to, because of these other pieces that we're waiting out from the state. But the other is the, the funding stream. My, my understanding is that the way it was set up, we, we can't just move the money if we decide not to participate in the guardian program to resource deputies. Is that correct?
That's correct. This money is specifically an application process, so you, you're going to identify whether or not you're going to submit an application by July the first. That's not even when the application's due, so it'll be after that. There's been some discussion about all the training that's gonna be required for that, that if we decided that this would not be something that would be in place for the upcoming school year because of the time for the training that would actually take place. So, the, the whole timeline and how this is to be rolled out is, there's so many things that are still unknown. I, I spoke with the State Department today to get more clarification, and they, they just, they do not have any information at this point, other than that it will be July 1st, based on the governor's letter to us. So, we, we still have a lot of information to gather, and the monies would be specific to that program, so you would apply, saying it's that training program, they've set aside eighteen hundred dollars per person, so what you would identify as a district is, are you going to participate? And if so, how many people are volunteering to participate? And that's the amount that you would apply for, eighteen hundred dollars per person that says that they're gonna participate. And that's all that money is for. And that is a separate pot of money from that of the school resource officers, which has already been given to us, it was in, in our budget for eighteen nineteen.
And I, I saw a Tampa Bay Times story that indicated that they were concerned in Pinalos County about being way short on the amount of funds that would be required to put a deputy in each classroom, or in each school, versus the amount of money received by the state. I imagine we're in the same pickle, yes?
We, we are, it is not gonna be enough to cover every school, so that's something we'll have to work towards.
But we don't have a choice. I mean, like, we have to put a SRO in each school, correct? By state law?
That is the expectation, yes.
So, that's what you call a partially funded mandate?
Right.
Yeah.
Good idea.
It's partially funded this time.
And heavily only for this year. It's not recurring.
Right.
And, and this is not a commercial for the commercial? But, in today's paper, if you read the first front page, you saw where it did separate the funding, as far as what's for a resource officer, and what's for the guardian program, and what's for the mental health program. And in that statement that they put in there, ninety-seven point five million is for the resource officers, but whenever you calculate that, that only comes out to six hundred and forty-seven officers for over two thousand Florida schools. So, there's a big, the, what was stated here tonight, you need to get on your legislatures, get on your, your Washington and everybody and say, we need more funding, if you want us to do this, then you're gonna have to provide the funding. The other thing I would say is that we look also to the county commission, since we're doing this with the, the funding that we're doing now, that we just approved tonight, that say, hey, how can y'all piggyback with us on this and help, you know, because we don't have the money right now to take and put all these officers that we need into the schools to protect our kids now. How can you help us till the state comes through? And they'll probably say, well, we can't, but, you know, and, and I can understand if they already have their budget done, but I'm just saying, there, there's gotta be other ways to get this funding out there, but you, as the constituents and the young ladies that were here earlier, you as the constituents, the voters to come up, that's what you need to do. Your local legislatures around here that are, are up for reelection, tell them, hey, if you want to get back in, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do that, and, and this is what we want to see, is money put down to the schools, because as I said earlier, on impact fees, we're losing money this coming year and years to come with the present administration that changed the law, where we're gonna lose impact fees, we're losing money going into charter schools that we don't have for public schools, and we're supposed to try to do all these things. Our money is tight. I, I didn't mean to, I'm sorry. This bothers me, because we're, we're the ones, we're the ones that get looked at, we're the ones that get blamed, as it was said there earlier, they're putting it, putting it on us. But we only have so much money to contend with to make these programs work and to try to make it work, and I'll tell you now, all five of these board members up here, and the administration at this local building is concerned about how do we provide the safety in our schools to make it work, and so that we take the right effort and make sure we do it right the first time and not have to go back a second. And, and that's what I'm looking at here. And, and I'll say one other thing, and I'll, I'll, I'll hush until it's my turn to talk again, and I won't call, talk then, I'll, I'll pass. But, the commercial made a, a comment after our last board meeting, that I was the second board meeting, board member to approve this, and I had to break it to Mr. Mathiasis to tell him that, that was not an actual factual statement that I made, and he said, I know, I was there. But, and then they did a retraction, and I appreciate the retraction, because I want to make the right decision. And I'll tell you right now, my right decision on my mind is, how do we put law enforcement in our schools? Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Any other comments or discussion about this survey? Alright. We are on eleven point oh two, which is our item on insurance consulting service employee benefits that was pulled from our three twelve agenda. So, we have the next two items. Superintendent, Karen, I'm not sure.
Ready for recommendation?
Prior discussion? Yes. We're ready for a recommendation. I'll pause.
Alright. I recommend approval of eleven point oh two, the consulting services employee benefits.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation?
So, no?
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor, oh.
Seriously, Mr. Dodd.
I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready.
Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
I recommend approval of item eleven point oh three amendment to the RFP two eight six nine DB employee benefits consulting services.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation? Is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, great. We are on the superintendent's report. Actually, yeah, I was just gonna ask that, I just thought about that. So, public, we have some public input from... Right. So, I'm gonna open the floor back up for public input that was regarding the insurance vote that just passed, so that the first public input that I have...
Oh.
Oh. No, 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 we should, no, 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 this has to come after voting. I was wondering why you were looking at me, I just forgot, like, what?
Goes through the vote, which we asked about waiving last time, and elected not to, so, but they have a right to speak for them three minutes if they wish.
Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna ask Joshua Rubich.
So, these are, these are representatives from the companies, not just a random private citizen.
That's exactly correct.
That's why I tested you.
Yes, sir.
I feel like kind of being at the Oscars, I had my two discussions that I was gonna say depend upon how this goes, so I'm grateful to be in this position. So, first, thanks for the opportunity, we appreciate all the hard work and effort that went in, not only by staff and committee, but also you as commissioners and understanding that, you know, a couple of weeks ago weren't comfortable and recognize the thought process that went, went through that. You know, our firm's been working with school districts for quite some time, so this isn't our first school district we're working with. We do OCPS, School District Osceola, Florida Virtual School, and some other small ones, so you're gonna be in good hands. We've already got on some of your state actuarial filings and looked at the numbers, and have already recognized some savings, and look forward that once we start getting in further to continue to uncover those stones and rocks to make sure we can continue to deliver for LCS, and your employees that you have. And just on a more personal note, my wife is a grad from high school here, my in-laws are here, my grandfather-in-law's here, and my mother's a retired teacher at Seminole Schools for thirty-five years, so this means a lot to us, not just another account that we get to work on. So, again, appreciate, thanks for the time, and look forward to a longstanding relationship for both of us. Thanks.
Tyler Brandever.
Good evening. I yield my remaining time to Scott Heinman.
I don't know if our policy does that. So, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, can I just ask, cause I've got Clark, and Terry, and Scott? Is that the intention of all of you, that you're gonna give time to someone else?
Yes.
Okay. I, if it's okay with the board, I would be, to appropriate, six minutes. Can we give them half the time? Is everybody okay with that? Any opposition? Okay, so, who's, Scott, are you speaking?
I am.
Scott Heinman.
What is, does my time start now? I will be brief. My name is Scott Heinman, I live at eight oh six Wilson Avenue, Leesburg, Florida, at least I hope my wife will let me in the door when I come home tonight. Last week, I had prepared some notes to say a few words after the board meeting and the vote on the broker services contract. I'd assumed that the board would vote in favor of the committee's recommendation, which they just did, and I planned to simply say thanks for the seventeen years of business, talk about our local aspect, and say that my price was lower than the recommended broker. But I didn't say that because you didn't have a vote. Instead, the board put Mr. Ritter in kind of an uncomfortable situation, and called her up and asked her to defend this committee's recommendation on the fly, and because of the RFP cone of, I think it's called the cone of silence, I could not respond at that time, but I would like to respond, because I think the unintentional consequence of a few of the comments created an article in the newspaper that I wanted to really more address than I did the board or the committee. And I think the thing that came out of it that I want to really hit on is kind of the allegation that came out, and I think Mr. Dodd asked a question related to, why did you charge four fifty in years past, and you're only charging, or your, your bid was only two hundred and you charge 450 in years past and you're only charging, or your bid was only 250,000?" Like to address that. So there are costs associated with... In fact, Tyler, if you want to hand out, I made some board documents for you all, and you can read them at your leisure, your reading pleasure. We provide a benefits administration system called Benowise for the district at a cost of about $100,000 a year. We also provide a platform called Think HR for HR-related questions, FSLA and related. And we believe that savings, according to the Think HR documents, is a savings of about $26,000. Sometime in last October of 2017, we began the process of an RFP for the employee-paid insurance contracts that expire on 9/1/18. This hasn't been presented. I haven't given you any documents because I don't want to disrupt that process, but that would be for dental, voluntary life insurance, and some disability. We did an informal RFP, received eight compliant responses, and chose two finalists. So these contracts for the top performance include better to or equal... At a lower cost to the district for the employees and their dependents. They also agreed to pay for all the costs associated with Benowise and the program of an educational tool called Alex that has been shown to the district, and we've demoed it a couple of times, and we did an RFP verbal response. We estimate this tool would have saved and eliminated hundreds of phone calls to our staff, saving around around $80,000 to $100,000. So the top two voluntary benefits carriers to pay, agreed to pay administrative costs of $100,000 of Benowise. We felt like they were going to save $100,000 in terms of the cost to our staff, so we deducted that $200,000 from what we were receiving at 450 and landed to 250. I know that's complicated, but simply put, we saved the district $200,000 by getting someone else to pay for things. And unfortunately, we got in a little bit of trouble over that in the paper. Also, the price proposed by the other finalists we put in there were about $430,000, and I believe Aon's was the same as ours. Gallagher started at 430. And the question I've got, and I don't mean to be rude about this, but if there were so many questions related to that particular item, I was surprised that they didn't come out during the oral evaluation. We would have been happy to answer the ones that we could, but the only person that asked a question was Kim Cronin. She was on the evaluation committee, and she said, "Are all the services that you're providing included in that amount?" Answered, "They certainly were." So again, I'm here more to clear my name. I care less about the contract than I do about our reputation. You've made the vote, and that's fine. We accept that. The last thing is I... One of the last things on pricing that I want to say is, we produced a document that shows, it's a board-produced document, that shows that we have saved in conjunction with the district staff, almost $67 million in health insurance-related costs from 2008 to 2014 versus national trend. So I want to say that I think regarding costs, it'd be tough to say we provided bad service, and I think that's kind of what came out in that conversation. We had some delays, public records requests. We didn't... We asked for the bids from the other folks. We didn't get this back in a timely basis, and we had to protest to get that information back. There were a couple of other things that I think we could go into. I'm going to choose not to. The last thing that I want to say is about the bad tax advice that you received. I'm not a tax attorney, but I sense the issue that Ms. Ritter has alluded to is based on an IRS guideline, not a rule or a law. And so far as I'm aware, there are no legal precedents, items regarding this issue, and no fines or penalties have ever been assessed. Other districts have interpreted this issue very differently. However, I would totally recommend that you follow the advice of your tax attorney regarding this issue. So I leave it there. There's really no questions to answer. I'd be happy to answer in him if you would, but you've already taken the vote. Is there anything else anybody would like to say or speak to? Thank you for bequeathing your time to me. Anything else? Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the past seven minutes.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Now, I believe we are at the superintendent's report this evening.
Well, I hope everyone had a wonderful spring break. I know that I did. And we are in the midst of that season of the year for testing and all that. We're just there. I'll leave it at that. I think you know my opinion on that, so... But I do just want to thank again our media specialists, I think those who are here today, and we honor them, recognize them for their hard work, and all of our outstanding employees for all that they do. And I'm going to leave my comments at that tonight.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mathias? No, do we have any letters of condolence before I go down there? Okay. Mr. Mathias.
I just want to reiterate what was said earlier by Mr. Dodd, and that is that we're not going to be taking any votes, so that those on the other side, y'all don't need to come next meeting and all show up, because there'll be plenty of time for that as we get into the workshop with more definitive direction. I do appreciate those that come out and are so passionate about in opposition to the program, because that's what I sense in everyone that speaks, they still deeply care about their kids, and that we ultimately will make the right decision. I hope that stops that attack within five minutes or less. And as we move through, just know that that's my focus. That again, for those that have ever thought that when I took office that we would be talking about arming anyone, Sandy Hook certainly knocked everyone's thought process in a different direction, especially mine, because I was just taking office then and had people that were in the school at that time. And then again, in Parkland, had a subcontractor who had kids in the school. So this is personal to me, and I will not allow it to happen on my watch here in Lake County as long as I have a breath to breathe about it. So that's it.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Burns?
I went actually with the superintendent to Eustace High School to observe the demonstration in Memorial of students that were killed. The students at Eustace High School did a beautiful job with their demonstration. They all gathered, and the student government association spoke each person's name and had a moment of silence. They then said one, you know, something like, "This person loved poetry," and it was beautiful. And there was a lot of tears. And then a moment of silence for each person, and they tied a balloon onto the fence at the front of the stadium. And at the end, there was another moment of silence after all 17 names were spoken. And I was just really proud of our kids because they couldn't have done a better job with it, and it was respectful and peaceful. And just, I think, children learning civics and how to have a peaceful protest or rally or whatever you want to call it is a wonderful, wonderful educational lesson for them. And I thought they... Our students were incredibly poised and did a wonderful job with it. So I was really proud to be a Eustace High School graduate. I think I did some sort of protest when I was in high school, but I think we just walked out. So, anyway. That's why I kind of wanted to go to Eustace High School this time.
To make up for that time?
Just memories. I also went to the Rookie Teacher of the Year awards banquet, which was a wonderful experience. It's always such a... That particular banquet is really fun because it's very Pepperelli style, and so it was just a joyous experience. I'm really proud of all of our Rookie Teachers of the Year and excited at what they're going to accomplish. I went actually to... There was a whole group of people that went to the Leesburg High School's baseball team to show support because they've had a tough couple of years and their coach had problems. That made the paper. And apparently it worked because Leesburg High School won by the 10-run mercy rule. So, go Jackets! I was really proud. And we also... I just wanted to highlight, I'm really excited about the Leesburg High School Construction Academy. That $866,000 is going to be huge. And I wanted to thank our lobbyist Gray Robinson and Associates because I know that they worked hard on this one. And I really asked them to work on this one. And they really pulled through for us, so I was really, really happy for them too. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, I'm afraid you've probably touched on some of the same topics that I wanted to mention, so I'll see if I can give it a slightly different slant here. And that is, I had the opportunity to spend some time at Windy Hill for one of their memorials. And I tell you that when you get to witness student-led productions, if you will, you really get a glimpse into their eloquence and their leadership abilities. And I think we've had the opportunity to experience that as a public tonight. We've heard, and it doesn't matter what side you're on, whether, you know, Ian Long over here, very well-spoken last couple of weeks. We've had a trove of speakers come speak in opposition, but so eloquent on both sides. And it's fantastic to be able to hear the young minds defend their side, no matter what that is. At the memorial at Windy Hill, once again, it was a great experience to be able to hear the eloquence of our students with some of the speeches that they had written. Once again, I mean, cheerfulness going on there. The students were able to capture the moment and do it in such a respectful and such a respectful way. Rookie Teacher of the Year as well. I'd like to give, once again, some thanks to the Educational Foundation, because this is not a state award. It's not something they have to do, but they choose to do it. And to do that provides such great motivation in a profession that is not easy, given everything that's coming down on teachers nowadays. It's hard to remain encouraged, especially in your first few years. And these folks, they've got some challenges ahead of them. Some of them are... They've gone to school to become a teacher, and others of them were career changes. And so when you step into an unknown world, something that is a shift from what you know, some big challenges go with that. And so huge kudos to all those that were nominated to be their school's Rookie Teacher of the Year. But once again, thank you to the Educational Foundation for hosting such a great event. And finally, I'll mention that Commissioner Sean Parks and I had our coffee and conversations this past week. And I always like to tell you what the popular topics are, but I bet you can guess that school safety and security came up a couple of times, and some questions also about charter schools and how the district responds to some of the parameters that's given to us by Tallahassee in some of those. And had a chance to meet and greet with a lot of new residents of Lake County. So thanks to everybody who came out. We are planning our next one coming soon.
Great, thank you. You can talk, Mr. Campbell. He's allowed to talk? He's all right. We're going to give him some time.
Just hats off to Jason Lancy. And just a little commercial. Ian is in the fair, and he has a steer, and he needs some help with sponsorship. So I would like for everyone that would like to, you know, get with Ian about this. He could use your help and assistance. Also, Rookie Teacher of the Year was a great time there. But I would like to also say hats off to Taverri's High School, Mount Door High School, and Eustace High School Culinary Arts for what they provided there for the refreshments. It was great. Thank you.
That was really short, Mr. Campbell. I have a couple of things. I will... I'm going to ask Ms. Challenger if she'll put together an email with the location. I also think we'll just double-check with the sheriff's office on attire, so you guys know what to come dressed in. I'm not sure if yours are... Attire, not attire for Mr. Lancy's car. He did. So we'll let you guys know that and who all will be attending, so everybody has that information. Okay. Is that a question? Was that a question or a statement? Okay, yes, it'll be noticed. We will, yes, definitely. Okay, perfect. Okay. Tomorrow night is the Teaching Academy Open House. If anybody's got students that are going to be in high school at Taverri's, we invite you to come from 6:00 to 7:00 tomorrow night. Really excited about the opportunity to partner with UCF and bring up some really good teachers right here from Lake County and bring them back to Lake County to serve our students. We... The communication about voting that came up tonight was a great idea. I don't know if we can make sure that we are... Go to a little bit of additional measures to make sure the public knows when that vote will be happening. I don't know what that would look like, but just to kind of put that plug in your ear so that there isn't this constant kind of back and forth about when it's going to happen and what's happening. So we'll try to make sure we do a better job at announcing that specific piece rather than pull an agenda and stuff. I also, I'm going to say Rookie Teacher of the Year, and I'm only going to repeat it because since I've been on the school board, we have had a UCF graduate that we've worked with in the top three finalists, and we've never brought home the title, and we brought home the title. So we had a UCF night graduate that was rewarded, so we want to say congratulations to Ms. McCurdy and her family again, and all of the Rookie Teachers of the Year. I... This is the last thing I have. I think you guys will appreciate it. So last night, when we got ready for bed, my eight-year-old started crying because she didn't want spring break to be over. So we started the countdown. So I know we have testing coming up, and we have all of these hot topics. We have 43 days left at school. So I just figured I would share that with everybody. It's on the chalkboard wall in the room now. So with that being said, this meeting is adjourned.
Forty-three day...